Okay, well, call to order this May the first, 2019, being the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn. Commissioner Waymeyer.
President.
Commissioner Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Stottlemyer. Chair Howitt.
Present. Just to let you know, two commissioners that aren't here are at a conference this week, so that's why they're gone today. Okay, if you'd all stand up, join us for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation made by Kathy Simes of the Well-Billed United Methodist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is great. Holy God, and holy is your name all over this entire earth. We thank you, God, for this area that we live in, that we can see the changes of the seasons. We thank you for the green trees and grass and the flowers that are budding, but we do pray for those who are affected by all of this rain, for those where the streets are flooded, the basements are flooded. Today is a special day, God, and we thank you for all of these employees who have come to be recognized. We know that often their jobs are a thankless job. For the hours they put in, they may only hear complaints, but today we thank them, we recognize them for the hours that they served this county, and we praise them for the job well done. We know that without them, there would be things left undone, and then we would really hear about it. So we thank you, God, for these employees. We thank you for elected officials, and we just pray that as they go about doing their jobs, that they would remember the citizens of the county, for those that depend upon them, to do a job well done, and that we would all center ourselves on doing a job that would glorify you and praise your ever, never-ending name. In your son's name we pray all these things. Amen.
Just to let you know, our speakers aren't working, so try to speak up so you can hear us back there. Okay, that takes us to correspondence and organizational business. Our first item is to consider May as Community Action Month and present a proclamation to Tousia Templeton. Tousia, come on, talk to us.
I guess first off, I'd like to thank you for doing the proclamation. This is May is Community Action Month. There's a thousand agencies across the country who organize May as Community Action Month. This is aid in the state of Kansas. Might add that we were founded in 1966 by Franklin County Commissioners, signed up on the organization after our first office was in Franklin County Courthouse. So, but over the years, we've appreciated the support that we've gotten from the county. And I see Commissioner Dunn's not here. We appreciate his work and the time that he provides to us, and we hope he keeps you informed more regularly.
We get Richard to do all the talking since he will be retiring in a month.
Well, our administrator's going to read the proclamation, the first item, present to you.
Proclamation 1902, whereas community action agencies were created when the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was signed into law, and whereas the East Central Kansas Economic Opportunity Corporation was established in 1966, and whereas ECAN has a 50-plus-year history of promoting self-sufficiency for the limited income, and whereas ECAN has made essential contributions to individuals and families in Franklin County by providing them with innovative and cost-effective programs such as community gardens, low-cost rental housing, rent subsidies via the Section 8 program, weatherization services, and early childhood education, and whereas community action agencies are needed as major participants in the reform of the welfare system as we know it, and whereas individuals and families on limited income continue to need opportunities to improve their lives and their living conditions, thus ensuring that all citizens are able to live in dignity, and whereas the poverty rate in Franklin County is 13.5 percent, and whereas ECAN's community centers provided programs and services to 621 families and 1,365 individuals in its service area last reporting year, and whereas Kansas and the entire United States must continue to wage war on poverty by providing support and opportunities for all citizens in need of assistance, and whereas Franklin County and ECAN have worked together to meet the needs of our most vulnerable citizens. Now, therefore, the governing body of Franklin County, Kansas, does hereby proclaim May 2019 as Community Action Month, and Franklin County, Kansas, in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Kansas Community Action Agencies, sign this first day of May 2019.
With that, I look for a motion to make May Community Action Month, present a proclamation to ECAN.
I'll take it.
Motion.
I'll take it.
Motion.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes, congratulations.
And Chair Howitt.
Yes.
Okay, present your name. I want you to...
Thank you.
I'll start.
Can I get a photo?
Sure. We didn't practice this. county employees for their years of service.
We have several employees that will be receiving awards this year, and we'll start with the 30-year award. That goes to Mary Ann Perkins from the Health Department. Mary Ann is unavailable to be with us today as she's out of training, but Mary Ann was hired in 1988 by our Health Department to fill the position at the Healthy Start Visitor. In 1990, the position was reclassified to a Clerk II, and in 2017, it was reclassified to the WIP Coordinator, where she continues to serve today.
Our next recipients are being recognized for 20 years of service. The first one is Travis Oftley from the Sheriff's Office. Travis began his public sector career as a juvenile detention officer with Franklin County in 1988. In 2000, he transferred to the jail as a correctional officer. Within two months, he assumed a deputy road patrol position in the sheriff's office. In 2006, Travis was promoted to a master deputy position, which was later reclassified to a sheriff's corporal, where he continues to serve today. Garen Anderson, Public Works. Garen began working as a heavy equipment operator in our Public Works Department. He continues to serve as a heavy equipment operator II, driving a blade.
Inside Garen's box is an hand-tooled leather belt, and it has engraved on it the county logo on the inside, and if he wants his initials, then it has it on there, too. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Jim Granis, Public Works. Jim began working for Franklin County in 1988, I'm sorry, 1998, as a blade operator II. He continues to serve in the Public Works Department as a heavy equipment operator II, driving a blade. In 1988, Jody began her employment with Franklin County as a clerk II in the treasurer's office. In 2001, she was promoted to deputy treasurer and continued to serve in that capacity until 2017, when she took her oath as the county treasurer. She continues to serve in that position today. Ken Halliburton, Juvenile Detention. Ken was hired as a full-time juvenile detention officer in May 1996. Shortly thereafter, he was reclassified to a part-time status for about a year, then returned to full-time status again in July 1997. He was named a shift supervisor in January 1999, and his position was reclassified to program director later that year. In 2007, he became the Assistant Director of Juvenile Services. He left the county in October of 2014, only to return as the Director of Juvenile Services in November 2016, where he currently serves today. Sarah Petley, Emergency Communications, 911. Sarah originally began working as a dispatcher for Franklin County in 1998. Within three years, she was promoted to a dispatch shift supervisor. In March 2018, she became the Emergency Communications Manager, where she continues to serve today. James Reader, Sheriff's Office, Jail. Jimmy began working for Franklin County as a juvenile detention officer in 1998. In 1999, he transferred to a correctional officer position in the jail, where he was promoted to a position of shift supervisor in 2002. He assumed the position of bond supervision officer in 2007, and continues to serve in that position today. Robin Wright, Appraiser's Office. Robin began working in the appraiser's office as a clerk II in 1998. She continues to serve in that capacity today.
Inside their boxes are the jewelry box that's engraved with the county logo, and then also a cultured pearl bracelet that has a charm that has their name on one side and the county logo on the other side of the charm.
The next recipients will receive their 15-year award. Deanne Farrell, Planning and Building. Deanne began her employment as an administrative assistant in the Environmental Health and Planning and Building Departments in 2003. Her position was reclassified in 2014 to a clerk III, clerk III, where she continues to serve today. Deb began her career with Franklin County in 2003 as a clerk II in the clerk's office. In 2006, the position was reclassified to a county capable clerk. Deb became the deputy county clerk in 2009, where she continues to serve today. Peggy Pearson, Noxious Weed, Solid Waste. Peg was hired in 2003 as a clerk III of the Noxious Weed Solid Waste Departments. In 2017, she became the interim director of Solid Waste, where she continues to serve today. Lael Seaton, Treasurer's Office, Motor Vehicle. Lael was hired as a clerk II in the Treasurer's Motor Vehicle Department in 2003, where she continues to serve today. The next recipients will receive their 10-year award. Kurt Anderson, Public Works. Kurt was hired as the service mechanic in 2008. In 2013, he was promoted to the shop foreman, where he continues to serve today. Tara Brooks, Sheriff's Office. Tara was hired as an adult detention officer in our jail in 2008. In 2009, she was promoted to the position of sheriff's deputy, where she continues to Dustin Kurerton, Information Technology. Dustin was hired in 2008 as the Director of Information Technology, where he continues to serve today. Teresa Falls, Juvenile Detention. Teresa was hired in 2008 as juvenile detention officer, where she continues to serve today. Tamara Moore, Health Department. Tammy began working as a clerk I in the Health Department in 2008. In 2010, she was promoted to a clerk II and received a third promotion to medical accounts manager in 2007, where she continues to serve today. Brad Schaefer, Public Works. Brad began working as a heavy equipment operator I in the Solid Waste Department in 2008. He was promoted to a heavy equipment operator II position before transferring to Public Works in 2013 to fill the service mechanic position. Five months later, Brad returned to, became a heavy equipment operator II position, operating a blade, and where he continues to serve today. Our last recipients are five-year recipients. Tim Cronin, Jail. Tim began working in Franklin County in 2012 as a correctional officer in the jail. In 2016, he transitioned to court security position, where he served until his resignation later that same year. He returned as a correctional officer in March 2018, where he continues to serve today. Rick Geis, Sheriff's Office. In May 2013, Rick began working for Franklin County as the undersheriff, where he continues Darren Graves, Solid Waste. Darren began working for Franklin County in 2013 in the position of heavy equipment operator I in the Solid Waste Department. He continues to serve in that position today. Betsy Hadgus, Clerk's Office. Betsy began working for Franklin County as a clerk II in the clerk's office in 2013. In 2017, she assumed the bookkeeper's position, where she continues to serve today. She and our next recipient, Janet Paddock, are both out of training today. Janet was elected to serve as the county clerk in 2013, where she continues to serve Rick Howard, County Commissioner. Rick was elected to serve as a commissioner for the Second District in 2013, where he continues to serve today. Ryan Nyswander, Sheriff's Office. Ryan began working for Franklin County as a sheriff's deputy in 2013. In 2017, he was promoted to a sheriff's corporal, where he continues to serve today. Jeff Richards, Sheriff's Office. In 2013, Jeff was appointed to the position of sheriff for Franklin County, where he continues Paul Sluter, Public Works. Paul began working for Franklin County in 2013 as a light equipment operator. In 2014, he moved to a heavy equipment operator I, where he continues to serve today. Matt Zleifel, Sheriff's Jail. Matt began working as a correctional officer in our jail in 2013. Within one year, he was promoted to a corrections corporal position, where he continues to
Joanne Hilotsky. Joanne first worked for Franklin County for 10 months in 1996 as a clerk II in the Public Works Department. She returned to Franklin County to work as the executive administrative assistant for the county administrator in 2014. In 2015, she was chosen to fill a human resources technician position, and in 2018, she was recently promoted to the human resources director position.
Okay, we want to thank all of you for your years of service. We all know how important it is to our employees, and we hope that you all have many more years with the county. We're going to take a break. Got some food and drinks in the back, a little reception, about 20 minutes. Let's see, we'll reconvene at 9:50. Okay, thank you. Okay, it's 9:15, we'll reconvene this meeting, and it takes us to public comment. Let me see if you have another comment. A citizen desiring to speak out loud on the agenda, they do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action to discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county mission business. A public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Who's on all this first?
Gene Hurt, 219 West Forest Street, Women's County. First thing I want to say today is, we have been all devastated here and in Osage. I had 10 inches of rain since Sunday till last night, and Salt Creek over there is out. Some of a lot of them are closed, though, for Osage County. But what I want to make a statement first now, then on that, is when I was on my way over here yesterday about quarter till noon, I come around the curve, the last curve coming into town, where it's west of Judge Ranch, Judge Ranch, there, the first curve, there was a major accident, and the two cars were smashed, but one car was headed back to Kimona that was in the wrong lane. The other one was in this ditch, white car, and what got me was the gentleman was holding his daughter in his arms, when he was outside the car, and you could see that she was crying. Anyway, the highway patrolmen got there at that time, and so I came up to the major debris in the highway, and the officer told me, he said, "You're going to have to go through it." He said, "It probably won't do your tires any good, but you need to go through it." Because he said, "I don't know whether I'm going to close it down or not." And so I came on, and he asked me if I'd call the radio station, and I did. And I did call Jeff and him about that, so people could be full warned of what was over there. So I talked to Jeff a little bit ago, the sheriff, and he assured me that those people were okay. So thank God for that. Okay. You know, I've been around here for a long time, and what we're witnessing now is major flooding. You know, you always hate to see this because it affects the people out in the county so bad. And yesterday, went with a group of guys, I guess why I came over here, because we wanted to look at the roads, because it's pouring down rain. And we went out, and I went out there by, on Nebraska Road, on 15th Street. And we drove down Nebraska, all the way down to Rock Creek, and across those, all the roads and everything. It's all the, everything. I want to say something to David Lee today, a major improvement, major improvement. But, the thing I don't understand is, there's three spots. Two spots were about, that are about over 100 foot long, that you didn't pave, and then there's another spot about 40 feet, that's not paved. Why in the world did you do that? I don't, people have told me, and the ones that were in the car can't understand. Why did you not do that? You had the money to do it, you should have done the whole thing the same way. My understanding now, you're going to come back and resurface it a second time, and then put chip and seal. Fine. But, no ditch work. See, and that, and I told you, and the others that I've seen and talked to, you're going to have to do something with the ditches. You've got to. The water was running, all the road we went to, every road, Nevada, Nebraska, Ohio, Oregon, all those yesterday. Water was running down the roads, on the sides, none in the ditches. None. None. And out there at proximity park, oh, bloody, bloody on both sides. You know, I'm going to say it now again, you know, how in the world are you going to get anybody? People got to know, if they're going to go in there and build something, they got to know that is a flood plain. And man, oh man, you sure sure see it now. If you get another heavy run like that, and there's somebody out there, it's going to be terrible to explain to the employees, they've got to wander out in their cars getting that are in the water. Thank you.
James Wallace.
James, thank you. James Wallace, 2447 Nebraska Road. I, too, would like to talk about the county roads, Spacere, Nebraska Road Department, that's not blacktop, from Rock Creek on the way north to 15th Street. Once again, I'd like to ask you guys to please go out there and look at it, and see what term or condition it is in. The water cannot get to the ditches because of the dirt and rock piled on the shoulders on both sides. It's eroding the shoulders, and it's ruining the road. And I'd also like to know why, or who makes the determination to overlay blacktop and patch puddles in blacktop instead of working on roads that are eroding and ditches that aren't working properly? I don't understand how you put people to work on blacktop that is in minor need of repair and not fix gravel roads that are in major need of repair. I'd like someone to explain that to me. I really think you guys need to look at the roads themselves and see what's going on.
Takes us to consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda today that you considered approved are the Franklin County Commission Minutes for April the 24th, the Franklin County Commission Study Session Minutes for April the 29th. There are no tax change orders. Claim vouchers in the amount of $257,779.42. And payroll for March the 21st to April the 20th in the amount of $1,166,491.26. Big much of improvements in agenda?
Commissioner Dickinson. Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
And Chair Howitt.
Okay, takes us to item of business. Now, first item of business is for the final flat of Demick Cove subdivision located south of Thunder Terrace, north of US 169 Highway, and east of Virginia Road, in the Timberlake Estates subdivision.
You are still number one.
Good morning, Commissioner. As you've indicated, this is a consideration of the final flat, and actually a replat of lots, 32... As you've indicated, this is a consideration of the final flat and actually a re-plant of lots, 32, 33 and the east early 25 feet of lot 34 of the Timber. This is a subdivision that was done quite a number of years ago. It was not an official subdivision in that it did not come before the planning commission nor the county commissioners. That was accepted by the then-county engineer. It has been recorded, I think it was recorded in 1975, which is about the time that we initiated subdivision requirements for the Franklin County. This was done to accommodate the placement and development of a new home, which will be extending over the lot lines. And in doing so, that would create a number of problems, but this is being resolved by merging it together in that in case of a subdivision requires a re-plant. So it has been re-planted. This matter was considered by the planning commission at their meeting of April the 18th. They have approved it. It's before you today to accept any easements and that it would include road easements. However, this is a unique subdivision in that the roads in this case are live roads. So there are no roads to accept as a part of this subdivision property. We would ask that you endorse or authorize the chairman to endorse the face of that by accepting those easements as set forth on the plan.
Does your eyes motion for a motion on this? If not, we'll look for a motion to accept the final plan of the Deering Cove subdivision.
I would make the motion that we accept the final plan of the Deering Cove subdivision.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Howey.
Yes.
Okay. Second item will be consider wanting the 2019 dust control to Scottwood Industries Incorporated in the amount of $1.07 per gallon.
Commissioners, back on April 3rd, we voted to solicit bids for the 2019 dust application program. We, on April 19th, we opened bids. We received two bids for the project, one from Scottwood Industries and another from EnviroTech Services. I believe they're out of Colorado. Scottwood Industries had the lowest bid at $1.07 per gallon. And EnviroTech bid was $1.29 per gallon. So we're recommending that we go with Scottwood Industries at $1.07 per gallon. And just for information purposes, this represents just over 2 cents increase from last year. So it amounts to a little less than $1,000 over last year's bid price for the 90,000 gallons.
Have we ever used Scottwood Industries before?
We've used Scottwood Industries about every year.
Oh, it is the same one?
Yes.
And what about the water? So are we doing the water?
I'm still determining whether or not we're going to be providing that service. There's a lot of factors besides just the cost of it. It'll get done. Either we'll do it or they'll do it. Yes. It's necessary for the dust control to be as useful as possible.
Do we have a timeframe?
We don't have an exact timeframe. We think that it's going to be within three or four weeks. So hopefully yet this month we'll get that done. I just can't exactly. We are in the process. I believe we've delivered all the flags. We've given maps of the, we have just over 100 different locations around the county that we're going to be providing dust control to. We've provided maps of all of the plate operators so that they are assured to take care of those areas. Yesterday during our plate operator meeting, we talked about, you know, the care of those areas. What to do if we observe, if we believe, if they believe that the roads need to be maintained after we've applied dust control. So we've got some internal controls to help, hopefully help prevent accidentally doing this. If we do need to maintain the roads, we've talked to the landowners prior to that work happening so that they are aware of it and we can discuss any changes that they would like to make. So we're trying to be a little bit proactive in that effort, but so we're gearing up for this.
How many, how do our numbers compare to last year?
We're down a little bit, roughly 20.
Do we have a public comment on this, Jean? Five minutes on just this topic.
Well, that was my first, first part of this, of what I wanted to ask was, how many is there? Is it less? I think Diane asked you and you just said now, it's less than last year?
It's just over.
Okay, so it is. Because you had 123 last year. So it is, let's say, less. Okay. Now, now with all this torrential rain, okay, what we saw yesterday, puddles, you know. Now, I got to stress because these people have paid their money for dust control. And they think their road should be made, should be repaired properly before you let it. Now, I hear you now saying that you don't know whether you're going to pre-soak it or not. What else?
I mean that. So they would pre-soak it, they just didn't know.
Well, now, I, well, I'm just, you know, you've said May. We're May 1st right now and we've had flooding. Okay, so what, what people are concerned about out there is, is that, you know, you prepare the road right, through the pre-soak, put it down, and then don't touch it. You know, I mean, if it's prepared right, you don't have to touch it till well after September 23rd. So I think that's some of the concerns they have out there because you're not going to put another coat on. So the proper amount of coating you're putting on, I hope, will be the proper amount for them people. They'll be satisfied with the money they've had to pay. And that's why I'm here today because someone wanted me to come here and emphasize that to you. So I do that because I am concerned about the public out there and I have for 17 years. And that's why I'm doing this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve wanting the bid to Scottwood Industries Incorporated for dust control in the amount of $1.07 per gallon.
Make a motion.
Motion's a second.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson. Chair Howey.
Yes.
Item number three. Consider for approval authorizing the chairman to execute the contract of the original 2019 chip and seal project and to execute change order number one. David.
Okay, commissioners, if you remember, we awarded the bid Vance Brothers for roughly 50 mile projects. After we awarded the project and set the information off to Vance Brothers, we reevaluated the areas that we had scheduled. We looked at the maps. We drove the areas that are planned for the future and determined that we could cut that 2019 project down to approximately 25 miles. So in doing that, lots of communication with Vance Brothers. They were perfectly fine with doing that. All of their unit prices remained the same. And so what we have, we, they had already executed the original contract on their end. And so what we have before you today is the original contract that we need to, that I would like to sign. And then the change order, which drops it from the 50 miles down to the 25 miles and adjusts the cost accordingly on the change order. Part of the reasoning for that, they had already gotten their bonds for the original contract amount. And the change order allows them to go back, them to go back to their bonding company and credit for that. So it doesn't, they're able to use that on another project essentially. So they're not out any additional money by having already purchased those bonds. And they still have enough to obviously cover the new project. So it's just a matter of doing the contract and then following up with the change order.
And they've already signed the change order, that's the word?
We, they have executed it on their end. We need to execute it on our end.
Yeah, it's, this is all procedural. It's clear in the change order. The price comes down exactly what we agreed upon. And yeah, I have absolutely no concerns with this.
Okay, so we'll look for a motion to approve authorizing the chairman to execute the contract of the original 2019 chip and seal project and execute change order number one.
What's that move?
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
And Chair Howey.
Yes.
Item number four, consider approval of the Public Health Department accreditation.
Morning, nice to see you again. I won't talk so long this time. As we discussed on Monday, our benefits to accreditation that keep us moving forward on quality improvement and improving our services to our community. So I will go through all that even if there are any questions or concerns about the quality of the answer at this time.
I don't have any questions. Just make a statement that the public knows we discussed this Monday in length. And we, of course, did not take a vote on Monday with the two commissioners that they're not here at all to vote for with this. They stressed that Monday that they were favored this even though they will be voting today. So just put that out there.
I'll move. We approve the health department's application submission for the five-year accreditation sign.
And I was second. Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
And Chair Howey.
Yes.
Okay, the bid's your up next also. Number five, consider approval of the first quarter of 2019 ride-off in the amount of $340.52.
This is a two-part report for the time period January through March of 2019. And I might just mention, pleasing to me that our visit stuff actually remained more stable and rough a little from last year. So that's a good thing to see people walking through the doors as well as the community projects we're able to work on outside of our office. And I just wanted to note that over the last five years, our payer mix has changed, how we receive payments. And so we had about 650 clients, individual clients, come through the door in those three months. And only about 20% are on public insurance now. So the rest is through private insurance or some through self-pay. And to note that with information I received yesterday, the Affordable Care Act has significantly helped our clients receive medical care. There are almost 1,000 county residents using the Affordable Care Act process in order to obtain insurance to cover their healthcare costs. So that's a good thing. At the same time, there are some changes in the Affordable Care Act that in recent time that have limited some of the services they can now receive through the Affordable Care Act. So it's changing some of the things we do. But just wanted to let you know that that payer mix has changed and there's a lot of private insurance out there. And so that's probably a benefit to our community. As far as income, we look at the revenue report, we had a total of, actually this isn't for quite right. About $63,000 in revenue from clinical services that we provide. When you look at this report, they, it doesn't subtract the insurance adjustments off the total. So it kind of throws that bottom total off a little bit. However, what we write off that was just not recoupable, which we couldn't obtain from individuals, was the $340.52. So that's not very much. That's very good. I would appreciate approval to write that on our off.
Questions for the chairman right there. I would have a motion to approve the 2019 ride-off in the amount of $340.52.
I would approve those right now.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Chair Howey.
Yes.
Okay, it may not be on your agenda, but we have an item number six that we've added. We have a water heater that's leaking at the jail that we need to address today as we get something done.
Yes, we have a water heater in the jail that covers the east side of the jail, which includes the kitchen. Monday afternoon, we discovered a small leak in that water heater. We had a plumber come out and evaluate it and said, "We're okay to keep it running for now unless this gets worse." It did get a little bit worse yesterday afternoon. And in that amount of time, I was able to get a couple of bids gathered up. One is from Kerry Plumbing for, they're estimating about $20,000 to get the water heater replaced. And it's all, they won't be able to start until Monday though. The other one is from BCI Mechanical and they can start right now, today, but they're about $25,000 to have it installed.
What size is this proposal?
As I said, it's a very large water heater. It's a 200 gallon. One of the proposals would be to put a 100 gallon water heater in with a larger burner and an 80 gallon tank with that, storage tank with it to get us close to the same capacity.
How much would that save?
That was one with BCI's. That, the main deal with that was that it got us what we needed sooner. Getting our hands on that larger water heater is more redundant than the biggest problem.
So they say they can start now, but they wouldn't necessarily have that heater available?
They would put in a 100 gallon with the 80 gallon tank, which would get us essentially to 180 gallons.
But if Kerry did it on Monday, would they have the 200 gallon?
Yes.
What's this going to come out of?
Yeah, that's a great question. We, you will recall here, two years ago, and we just talked about this a couple of weeks ago. We asked the sheriff to remove one of his positions. And that resulted in a $65,000 savings. And we told him if he would do that, we would keep that in a, it's a fund in the commissioner's budget, but it is earmarked for the sheriff's facilities. We just used approximately 20 grand out of that to do the work and the detox cells. So we still have 40, 45 grand in there. I would recommend that that is where this come out of. It doesn't put the sheriff behind the eight ball in his budget. It's literally set aside for these types of contingencies. And so it does not place us in. I mean, obviously, we'd rather not have to spend 25, $20,000, but this is exactly what we've budgeted it for.
Chair Richards, are you comfortable with us using that money for that?
Yes.
How old is this water heater that we're replacing?
I believe it's, it's got to be right around 25 years old. It had a good life. Had no signs of having any trouble with it though until one day after.
Was the next one the last 25 years old?
Yeah, here's open, right?
There is a hot water being spoke, a hot water heater on the other half of the building?
Correct, yes.
Are you comfortable with waiting till Monday to get it replaced?
I don't know if it's going to hold up.
I'm going to Monday.
It has some severe leaks right now that there's a good chance it may not make it to the weekend without the whole bottom half of that leak. Think we shut off the.
I was just saying, we shut it down.
Yeah, we can shut, we can shut the water heater down and isolate it so it won't be leaking anymore.
Is there another hot water heater in the facility? No, yeah.
But it does the west end of the jail. So the kitchen would be without hot water and then any of the cells on the east side would be without hot water.
My thought is if we can shut this down, I don't know, four days is worth us spending another $5,000 just to have something four days sooner.
Immediately shut off hot water.
Is there anybody else that you can call? Is there anybody else that you can call? I mean, you, or you think that would?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can find some others that they'd be interested in doing this project.
Or giving it, yeah, I mean, or, yeah, Monday, if they can do it on Monday.
The urgency, of course, was, you know, it's leaking now. And then we had this meeting this morning, and so we're upgrading the price that it was going to be to break before you today.
Well, we're probably trying to find someone else now that's not going to be the chance to be the front of us before Monday.
Well, one of, one of the things that you could do is you could authorize us by motion to spend an amount that you are comfortable with. That way, if he gets a bid that is that amount, we can pop on it and just go. And I don't know if that's, you know, you've got 20 versus 25 grand. You know, if there is some amount in there you're comfortable with, then I would say make a motion to authorize Brandon to have the repairs done at or under that amount.
You said there was a little bit of variable on the 20,000 bid?
Um, yeah, so the, the unsure part about that bid is we're pretty sure that that water tank was set down in there as the jail was being built. And so it's going to be really tight if it's going to make it out. And one piece, they may have to cut it up, which is more time and labor to get it cut up in a small enough pieces to get it out of there. It's, I mean, the new tank is about 600 pounds. So a 25 year old tank with seven, it is going to be significantly more than that.
And any company that we use is going to have that, that problem.
Yes.
It's going to be on top of that. My personal opinion, I'm comfortable with the 20,000. I mean, that's a little bit we got to do to that. If it comes up with something that's quicker or it's less.
Great saying, certainly. Different variables. Because that was not, that even wasn't feasible to place that in place. Right?
You have with the 20,000?
Yeah.
Which is in higher though because of the extra variables.
21?
Must be done.
Say, if, if you're more comfortable with the $20,000 amount, I, I would make a motion for 21, just because I don't want it to be 20,200 and have us, because I, I am going to respect that formality and we wouldn't do it at that amount. So I would say 21,000 if this is the, the way you want to go with this.
And make sure it gets done timely, so.
It's time to see if there's more of a motion to, I think, I think.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve our, we still need to record a $40,000 repair, the, replace the water heater in the jail. To have a motion to authorize Brandon to spend up to 21,000 on the water heaters.
I was second.
Motion is second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Sheriff Howie?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to staff reports, Derek.
Yeah, Janet and I finished up our budget meetings this week. So just to kind of give an overview of what we've done so far, the two of us have now sat down with every department head and elected official. And this is really the first step in our budget process. We sit down with the department heads and the electeds and, and, you know, we give them a month to go through their, their 19 budget and ask them, do you foresee any changes into the 2020 year? They make certain, you know, suggestions and then we sit down and meet. Typically, what happens during those meetings is we make adjustments to those budgets and ultimately come to an agreement with the department head or elected official so that what you guys end up seeing is a fairly refined product. We're done with that part. And I will say, this is our third year doing it, and I really feel like it's been smooth every year. But this year in particular, I feel like the department heads and the electeds, and I'm talking every single one of them, did a great job on their budget. I thought we got very reasonable numbers. There were some requests, but they were all, and not all of them are going to make it to you, but they were at least, I could understand the reasoning behind making the request. Ultimately, when looking at the budget in its totality, I don't think they were feasible. But the, I will tell you, the requests that go above flat that make it to you have very good justification for doing so. And then really, the only other increases were for salaries pursuant to our pay plan. But outside of that, you know, you're talking roughly 20 budgets. I think only four or five of them had other requests for increases. And so we're pleased with how that went. So what we will do now is our audit is currently being conducted. We think it will be wrapped up here fairly quick. Once we have our audited numbers, and those are the numbers that we actually base everything off of. And so we're waiting on that. Once we have that, then we'll start, you know, working on some of the other funds that aren't related to a specific department. And then just working towards having our department head budget meetings with you guys. And so I'm very pleased with where the budget's at right now and looking forward to what I hope will be a fairly smooth 2020 budget session. So regarding decisions on roads and how we make those decisions, it is no different in Public Works than it is in any department. I rely on staff members and their staff. So I rely on department heads who rely on their staff to tell me what the needs of the county are. You guys don't have time to literally, you can't be in every department every day. I can't be in every department every day. So I rely on my department heads. They make recommendations to me. Assuming that those recommendations are over $10,000, then that comes to you because I have a $10,000 spending limit. I will tell you, and I've said this many times in public meetings, if it gets anywhere close to that, I don't know that I've ever spent $5,000 without coming to you. And so certainly, I typically stay away from that $10,000 limit. So the decision to do Nebraska, that was all made in a public meeting that I believe these individuals were in attendance at. So, and that will continue to be the case. We talk about the savings we've realized from the Chip Seal Project. That will continue. We might have recommendations based upon our staff's expertise. But the decision on how that money's going to be spent will be made by the public selected officials, which obviously are you guys. And so, and that's how the whole county works. I mean, I don't, Nick Robbins over at Ambulance doesn't spend 20, $30,000 at a time if he needs to make a purchase, even if it is within his budget authority that you guys have signed off on, we're still bringing it to you. And the reason we do that is we are trying to be as transparent as possible. Now, we don't do it for literally every decision because we would get nothing else done. You know, it cost us a couple hundred dollars to post hiring advertisements in the Ottawa Herald. If I had to come to you guys and ask, hey, can I have permission to do this? Then we would literally have a day's worth of meetings whereby I'm asking you for permission to spend every dime that, so obviously, there has to be a certain modicum of trust there. But anything that could, I think remotely be considered substantial, that's going to be a decision that is ultimately made by you. And certainly would encourage the public, if they have questions about that, please contact me, contact one of you, because it's important to me that they all know and understand the process by which tax dollars get spent. And that's all I have for staff.
Sure.
Switchers, they said, last week, I've had the privilege of awarding a couple scholarships to some graduating seniors. This year, those are the Deputy Sam Smith Memorial Scholarship that is funded through the Sheriff's Foundation. And last week, we awarded one scholarship to Juliette Lane from Ottawa High School. She'll be running track at Emporia State studying political juvenile delinquency studies with plans to go to the KBI. And so we wanted to congratulate her on that.
Who's that?
Lane.
Juliette Lane.
Juliette Lane. And then on Monday night, I was out at Kamona at West Franklin and presented the same scholarship to Cameron Power. And Cameron is going to be playing football up at Dome University up in, up in Nebraska. And she's already started his criminal justice classes and he's planning to finish up that degree and get into law enforcement. So we just wanted to congratulate both of them. It was, we had some great candidates that applied this year and the board made those selections. And so I'm glad that I get to be a part of that. Also on the lines with Sam Smith, coming up is Peace Officer Memorial Week. And we will be, Sheriff's Office will be providing escorts to Katie Smith, Sam's mother, for the memorial ceremonies that will, that will be held up in Topeka. And so we will be up there Thursday night and Friday during that. If we're not spending the night, but we'll be, we'll be up there for both of those events. And we'll have an escort on our office to be there with her. The detox cells, we got, we have the ceilings and the cameras are all done. Now we're just waiting for the company to come in, the dozen walls. They cannot, by their policy, will not put us on a, on their schedule yet until they receive a payment. And they should probably be getting it.
I would add this to it.
They should probably be getting it the next day or so. So we should be on the, on the list and then we'll have that part done as well. So let them know if any of you have questions for me, if you have any answer.
Do you want to talk about, I mean, I don't know if you've talked to the board about it, but you're sending guys to, and I think this is just a great idea. I think Kyle Laswell is doing it now to get a public management certificate.
Yes. Last year, I attended the Command School. I went through the Certified Public Manager Course. When I first came on to the county, the county had a policy, the administrator at that time wanted all the elected officials, department heads and senior staff to go through the Certified Public Manager Course. And that kind of has gone to the wayside a little bit, but I did go through it last year. I believe that we've been fitted greatly from what I was able to learn there and to obtain, sort of pile as well as going through that course right now for us. That is, it's two days a month and it's down at Hutchinson at that KLET C. And so when the, when that course is completed, you've completed Command School, which is a command level school for law enforcement, as well as a certified, you get the Certified Public Manager designation as well. That's something that I'm wanting to get continued on and help develop our staff to move on to that next level, get them more of a thinking more responsibly as far as how we relate with the public, public engagement, budgeting, this taxation is a part of, there's a, there's a gamut of it. And it's a great, it's a great program and it's just something that we're trying to do to help not just develop our staff for us and what we serve, the product that we serve the community, give to the community, but it helps the county overall, where it will take on some tasks and have some good ideas as a, kind of do that. So it's just something that we've been, that we are doing and we're seeing great in it.
I think one of the things that I appreciate, and Chief Robbins is a graduate of a very similar program, definitely thinks it, it makes the employee so much more well-rounded. And I don't think all trainings are created equal. And I think this is a very good one. And talking with him through his budget, one of his modest increases is for training so we can send more. But I, I think, you know, that is, we'll get a great return on that investment. You know, when you think about guys who, guys don't get into law enforcement necessarily because they want to do budgets or because they want to understand, you know, the intricacies of taxation. That being said, we all know, Jeff certainly knows, that that is a big part of his job. And the more of his staff that can kind of understand that a little bit gives him people to bounce those ideas off of. And I think it's just going to create a, I mean, an even better office for him. And so I appreciate you sending them and I hope it's something we can continue to do. So, thank you.
Okay, so with flooding that's gone on over the last day or so, we had, I think we had seven people out about 1:30 last night, working the set barricade and make sure that the signs, we've got flood, head signs all over the county, making sure those were down and lights were out. They coordinated throughout the night with emergency management and Sheriff's Department to, you know, we can't be everywhere at once and having those other folks to coordinate with really, really helped. This morning, they were out at 5:30 or so assessing the damage and, and watching things. So most of the staff today, that's, that's exactly what they're doing. They're spread out in the no flood areas to monitor the situations. We had about 37 different locations last night that we looked at. Some of those locations have, the waters receded with Meridazine not having crested yet and the potawatomi. Also, we're expecting other areas around the county to have some issues and we're trying to be prepared for that. We had over 30 type two barricades with lights out. A few of them were stolen or thrown in the ditch or washed away or some gloss on. That seems to, my understanding seems to be a regular occurrence when we place signs out, they disappear. So also, a lot of our roads are now in rough shape, as you heard earlier. We've got a number of roads that are in similar situations. So we're, we're looking at those, the roads with, that have hills, those are especially in rough shape. And so we're, again, going to be trying to get our roads back. Once we have roads in a passable situation, we will start looking at other ways to help mitigate some future damage. But it's a big job and it's going to take us a while. Nothing's going to happen overnight with the staff that we have. So we are aware of most of the situations, but I would encourage the public to let us know if they see something so that we can get out and take a look at it, get it on the list so that we can get things taken care of in a orderly fashion. And then to, on Rock Creek Road, contractors out this morning actually continue to work on that. So they're all going to be dug here soon, but, you know, weather plays a part in that as well. Small things on that.
Have you gotten good feedback from the public who live in the area of Nebraska Road regarding the repairs that were completed?
Yes, I received one email so far. I'm sure that a lot of business with some of the others, they'll be equally happy with that. The Nebraska Road event terrace did cut out the worst areas. There were several areas that are still in good shape. We didn't see the need to spend additional dollars to cut those areas out if well. And then through our Chip Seal Program, we chip sealed over the whole thing. Even the areas that we just axled, the reason being that Chip Seal is a protective layer will help that material last a little bit longer. And so, you know, they've got a really smooth surface. We're going to rough it up a little bit in an effort to protect it from the turn.
And I've got, I believe I got the same email that you got. I think you did as well, Commissioner Dickinson. But I've also gotten several phone calls. And in fact, I've been asked to extend a thanks to the Board of Commissioners. And so you guys know as well as I do that those calls don't come super often. So it's always nice to hear when you invest, you know, tens of thousands of dollars in a project, and it is appreciated. And I think in this instance, it certainly is.
You might write down Douglas Road. I have some checked out. I drove with the other day and we had two spots out on Douglas Road that we had a frost situation, take that amount out.
Whereabouts? Whereabouts?
Douglas Road?
That's, that's what I'm saying, the county.
Nobody addresses, you tell me who lives there and I'll tell you.
Do you know the place Frost Road?
I do, no, I don't, I'll, I'll find it out. Anyway, they dug both of them out. You say something to Bobby, tell him the ones out by Jed Hermer's that they fixed just up the road a little bit. I drove it the other day and there's two of them that came up. They were starting to get a little soft and they were working on the other two.
We still have, I, I can't measure against how many soft spots we have in the roads. We're trying to tackle those.
The two spots they fixed aren't too bad, but these two have gotten worse, that have been worked on also.
I, I think I've shared with you all that we're gonna be finding these things from the past winter all summer long.
Right.
That is looking to be true now that you add on the flooding that has exacerbated some of our marginal road conditions. It's made things that much worse. So we are trying to be diligent about these things, but we have so much to have, so much time and, and so much budget. And we're trying to be diligent about this and take care of it as fast as we can.
Flood's not, it's just the roads and that whole community is underwater like other states are dealing with.
Correct.
Janet, that's here at Kirk Conference in Wichita for the rest of the week. Learning a lot of stuff about our election, stuff I bet is gonna be coming up. Wellsville's getting ready for a small election.
Okay, Commissioner comments, board reports.
I didn't attend any meetings, but I did have a meeting with Judge Kevin Kimball last week. I have a due appreciation for his job. I, thank goodness I've not had to be in front of him for any good personal, but I do appreciate what he does. And I, just a couple of comments. One, you know, we say that the Public Works Department is, is our start, but you know, really it's the public. Public is our start, so, you know, if you, if you come across a flooded road, you know, take pictures and put it on Facebook if you want, but please make that phone call to somebody that can actually go out and, you know, put that sign up. Because I, personally, I would feel terrible if somebody drove into that and, you know, bodily harm to them because I didn't make that phone call and I only chose to put those pictures on Facebook. And then the gentleman he was talking about, so I've gone on to be a commissioner for, you know, just over three months. And I had a constituent early on that, you know, let, let me know about the condition of Nebraska Road. And I believe that David Lee and Administrator Brown were also part of that conversation. He contacted us and the problem has been, you know, he said, and the email he sent was, this is more than I ever expected. You know, so they went through the proper channels, they contacted the people that can actually, you know, take care of the problem and that's what I would appreciate. I mean, I think that's what the public needs to do. You know, you, you choose who you call, but you know, if you make the phone call to the people that can make things happen, you know, that's what I would encourage you to do.
Okay, then I've been to yesterday, had a tourism, had their retreat in Wellsville. And it was at a place called Wellsville Event Center at five oh six South Main. One of the board members owned that and they've re modeled it. It's a pretty nice facility, they have a lot of things, weddings and stuff like that there. And they let the tourism board use it for their retreat. It was a couple hours, they talked about admission statement, goals, marketing, a lot of different things like that. That's been the one thing that I've been to since the last meeting. Now we have a commission meeting next Wednesday, no study session on Monday. Anybody have anything else? If not?
I, I do have one thing. I sent a question to you and I didn't know what's the process of that, I mean, we did this kind of?
Yes, we, I got an inquiry about the tornado siren in Ran Tool. It had been acting up and so the sheriff sent a deputy down there to, I guess, manfully warn the community. My understanding is Ran Tool has been in communication with a company and the company is coming down this week to get it fixed. And so my understanding, and this is via Alan Radcliffe, is that the prob, the problem is being fixed as we speak. I know Alan's been kept in the loop on it and I think the name of the company is Blue Valley, something or other, but I think they're on.
City, totally taken the side of the, they do.
I'd rather not be the leading story on the Kansas City news, you know, yeah.
Who's the first motion to adjourn? The motion for a second.